Gentlemen, we will call the October tenth meeting of the Caroline County Board of Supervisors to order. But the record states that all board members are here. Mr. Forehand on my far right, representing the Madison District. Mr. Jeff Black, representing Western Carolina. Mr. Sealy, representing Bowling Green. Mrs. Long, representing Port Royal. Mr. Underwood, representing Reed Church. And I'm Floyd Thomas, representing the Manapanae. At this point, Mr. Black, I didn't ask ahead of time, would you lead us in a moment of prayer?
Sure.
Followed by the pledge. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, as we come here before, as we come before you tonight, we ask for your blessings. We ask for your wisdom, and we ask that you look over what's happening in the world, and that somehow problems can be solved peacefully and without war. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it is sent, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we will start with opening board comments. Started my far right, Mr. Forehand.
None tonight, sir.
Mr. Black?
I'll take up his time. So first of all, I do want to, we have it on our agenda a little bit later on, but I do want to congratulate Beth Curran, so for all your years of service. Anytime that I needed information or something from you, I always got it. So I know you've put in a lot of years into this county, so that's really a big thing, and I think your office will be in good hands, too. So, thank you very much. I, secondly, we got an email last week from a constituent, and it was not in my district, but it was, I thought it was very poignant, and I think all of you got it, from a gentleman who was just talking about data centers in general, and just talking about the decisions that we have to make. And I thought it was just well-written, because whether, we're going to have different opinions up here on data centers, or solar, or everything else, and he basically said, you know, "I couldn't do your job, it's very, very difficult," and whatever decision you make. So he was very open about that, and I think we did all get that. So that email was very appreciated. On another note, I received an email that was not so good from a constituent. And I, I do want to point out to people, I know people get very, very passionate and about certain subjects. However, freedom of speech does have limits. And you do have freedom of speech, but you do not have the right to threaten anyone here, whether it be vague, or whatever. That is not, that is not something that is impure, and it's a freedom of speech. So just kind of keep that in mind, you have every right to disagree with us, but you don't have a right to, with vague threats. The third thing I do want to discuss is, at the last board meeting, very end, in closing board comments, there was this very odd statement that was made by a supervisor up here about certain supervisors being faked or amending an agenda. I've amended agendas in the past, I have no problem with an agenda being amended. My problem is, is that we have a major topic, where something that is really, really, really big, public's going to want to know about. That is really probably not the time to amend an agenda, when the public has no idea that it's going to be put back on an agenda. That's what I said, and that's where I stand. People can call me fake, or whatever, I have no problem amending an agenda. I just, let me just clarify, when we amend an agenda, it's something that's really, really, really important, the public should be aware of that amended agenda. As a matter of fact, I think a couple of months ago, we had a work session where we had some items on an agenda. I think Mr. Sealy had brought up the point that probably wasn't the best time to bring these up at a work session. And we decided that probably was the best idea, and we took those off that work session agenda. So there isn't a case where, hey, we decide as a board, maybe probably not the best time to be discussing these, let's do it where it's more public. So, and finally, Mr. Chairman, at some point, I do know that B-Dot is mowing today, at some point, if we can have on agenda a schedule of basically what the county's going to mow, and what the, what B-Dot's going to mow, what we're going to make responsible for, I know we've talked about it before, but I think we need some clarity to that. I will be honest with you, I just, we have Ladysmith Road being widened right now, and it's starting to come together, and we can kind of see the end results, and then you have off to the side, you just have grass that's, you know, two feet tall, and it's just kind of going into the section. There's a new road, the sides have already looked unkept, and I just don't think that's sends a good statement to, welcome to, welcome to Caroline, we don't, we don't mow grass. So, anyway, that's my comments, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've got a few comments, and I'll be a few minutes this evening. First, I'd like to lead with the passing of Spencer Allen, for those that didn't know Spencer Allen. He was on town council for thirty-six years, and served many of those years as vice mayor. He was a true community servant, he did many things for many folks. He actually took care of a few folks independently at the nursing home, brought them things, took care of their checkbooks, made sure they had things they needed. He will be very, very missed in the community, and it's just very sad that a vibrant eighty-four year old man is just no longer here with us today. I can't say enough condolences to his family. On another note, I want to address my comments to the permanent record, the people on Jericho Road, and to the public at large. These comments will also be joined on my website, under past editorials, where I have past newspaper articles, when we had a consistently covering newspaper in Caroline. I have had dozens of phone calls from county citizens since our last several meetings with questions about board procedure, and revisiting, and revoting, and even more questions since the three hundred ninety-seven FOIA documents were released last week. As everyone knows, these revisits happened twice in thirty days, in a thirty-day period in concern projects represented by the same attorney. Furthermore, I now see a return of the Haymont Development, as I predicted, and those FOIA documents represented again by the same attorney. There was also a new project by the same developer, as Jericho Road, better known as the Valco Project, with the same attorney located behind the truck stop on Carmel Church for two hundred and fifty acres. Since I had no knowledge of any of the supervisor's action regarding these back-to-back votes, I cannot assure anyone it won't continue to happen. To stop this as a tool, the board would have to adjust its bylaws. But I certainly can't tell you, the employment of this is an anomaly, does not usually happen, nor does it happen frequently. This has not happened in the sixteen years as I've been a board supervisor that we've revisited topics of this magnitude. I wanted to extend my profound apology to the residents on Jericho Road, because I know you felt, when you left the meetings in June, confident that a unanimous vote against the locating a perk amidst your homes and farms from the Planning Commission, and a four-to-two vote against doing so from the Board of Supervisors, gave you the feeling you were safe, and the issue was closed. For some time now, the county's been working on a project now known as Madamie. This had hundreds of hours invested in it by county staff to develop a perk with minimal impact, including plans for infrastructure that allows the county to recognize the revenue upfront. We have more than enough property options there, and even other by-right locations to allow data centers. More than can be built in several lifetimes, in theory. Not that that was the intention, but this would have been a good test case for one in Caroline. I am not naive, did not assume, as has happened in other areas, that developers would come in and think we might rezone for data centers. Whatever a decent, whenever a decent-sized parcel of land was available for sale, you know, they see them and think, oh, we can do a data center there. Data center, data center land speculation is hot right now. A fact I learned from Mrs. Long's husband, who was in real estate. They are, as he said, trying to buy up and rezone land everywhere. I just never thought Caroline would take a bite of this apple. I also thought the FOIA would yield little to nothing. I want the citizens to know, I had no idea what was developed behind the scenes, and how much pressure there was from the developer for a vote change. I had no calls from this developer before the June meeting to support his project. None. After the board meeting in August, this developer began to call my home phone, so it was evident to me that he expected the vote to fail in June, accounting for his silence then. The calls started the day after the August board meeting. Some of this is similar to the experience of the rezoning of from the same, of the same developer's so-called train station in 2013. I voted against that project, not only because of the absence of any train, and zero likelihood in the future, but the absence of water, infrastructure, roads, and other basics that can only provide, can be provided by you, the taxpayer. The train station alone would have cost our taxpayer millions to build, even if there was a train section, or train. As we know, the results of this vote passed four-to-two in favor of readjusting our composite, as we know the result of this vote passed in favor of readjusting our composite in it to drop the money the state pays to schools, which again, you, the taxpayers, pick up. As I predicted in 2013, the property still sits empty, producing no income from the county. Even if some benefactor obtained water, and a business were suddenly to appear there, it would be years, if ever, that the county would break even monetarily wise. I know the chairman has pointed out that it takes three years for the state to see the rezoning, but three years is a short time. We now have many years of supplementing the differences on the train station. Remember, we recognize the assessed value in property tax, not the market value. If you read the FOIA, you can see what the county staff feels about the train station project. The language is colorful, and is best read by some other so inclined, but sufficient it to say, it's not a viable project. However, this level of pressure in 2023, we currently see in the FOIA, is different than in 2013. And I cannot explain where we, where we are now given the track record of this developer. The monetary implications are not subjective or personal, they are simply math and affect our budget in the negative. When shown the tenor, and tone, and content of the FOIA emails, I can blame no citizen for thinking the developers and their attorneys are in control of Caroline County. While I was shocked, and I'm not easily shocked, while I had suspected there were major problems with the integrity of our planning department, I had no idea the director was preparing documents upfront for developers, speaking with constituents about the benefits of developers paying for perks, and aligning his personal vision for the county as if he's an elected official with said developers. I also had no idea our planning director was sending documents to his home via email, via email handle, the Profferman. I have been asked why so many other opportunities our board would zero in on Jericho Road. And if we are planning to do all this, all over, all over the county, let me back up. If we are planning, are we planning to do this all over the county, and the answer is, I don't know. I can only say that my focus has been on the Madamie project because of multiple benefits to produce such an enhanced revenue stream. At every one of my constituent meetings, I explain that business is the engine that keeps our taxes low. And I assume, since the county has put so much effort, thought, and planning into Mad, into the Madamie area, that our focus lay there. I understand now that folks are angry and distrustful of any data center, which is a huge shame, but cannot blame anyone. The trust factor for our county is down the drain. The motion written by the Valco attorney in the FOIA essentially calls on our taxpayers to pick up the tab for water and sewer on Jericho Road, reminiscent of the train station, which for me is a non-starter. That the motion includes passing Jericho for the health of the citizens of the county is a supreme irony I cannot even begin to address. I cannot vote to approve a rezoning and comp plan change every time a developer finds a good deal on land in Caroline. I have been asked if, I have been asked if anything that has transpired is illegal. I am not an attorney, and I do not know the answer, but I do know that this has been a big three-ring circus since summer, and it is not a good thing. It doesn't bless our county. I think the low point for me before the FOIA were the pictures of the Belmont developer running after Supervisor Long when she took a break at the August meeting. Those were texted everywhere on social media. The other low point was reading the comfort level apparent when the developer's attorney instructed our administrator, or suggested our economic development director should change his statements about their project to ease their clients' concern about its passage. People are paying attention, and the look is not flattering. This is very disheartening for me, since the six tenants of my mission statement on my website include transparency to citizens, as well as smart, compatible business, with the operative word being compatible. In the past, the county had a huge perception problem, which ran concurrently with the Supervisor Buddy system for rezoning and for monetary insolvency. I have watched the county come back from these perceptions to be the envy of the region as far as business interest is concerned, and have a healthy fund balance. It appears we have come full circle. That is my statement on the last couple of months. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I understand that emotions at times run high, but our board meetings, board meeting rules do not allow for applause, booing, or any statements like that. You can please refrain from doing that again. I would most appreciate it. Thank you. Goodbye.
I have a couple of statements. One of them is the school board, we were meeting with this earlier, we have gotten a meeting in, going to, for that, to officially be in the school board, and, of, before the work session. As far as the comment of the attorney after events, I don't know if when she asked this material, she said, why, but I said, it's been heated, and she said, I'm comfortable with this. Yeah. We've done, I will share, given some of the points, about these two different topics, that is part of my, um, next month, and one way of being, definitely, it's a hard research, hard decision, being, it's a little bit, that, that I first, the representative, since it's grown up. But here's, yeah, from, I, it's, um, so, I, I, to be true, thank you.
First, sorry to hear about. Travel with my basketball team for almost ten years, and, so, I can go with some of his family. My second comment is regarding the state fair, I think it was a success, I talked to, just all of them, I think that they had more than they anticipated, business Saturday, I think, active everywhere, but, said it was quite successful. Now to the next. The purpose of economic development departments to go out and bring businesses into the county. When the developer or company books to come into the county, you don't call the board supervisors, they call Mr. Wilson. And Mr. Wilson sometimes will call and say, do you want to meet with X, Y, or C about a project they want to bring in? That's his job, because we have instructed him to do so. Doesn't mean we agree or disagree. But that's his job to go out and see companies coming to the county. The attorney that we're talking about, I know she used to be our attorney. She wanted to have Jericho Road, we talked about changing Proffer, she wanted it to look, to change for one entity. And I told her, I would not make that. She said, can I send you a motion? I said, yes, sure, send it to me. But the motion that she sent to me only included one person's property. That motion was never made, because I had other constituents in the Jericho Road area who had called me specifically to say they wanted their property included in the comprehensive plan. So that motion was never made. I wanted the complete comprehensive plan to be reviewed for Jericho Road, so that's how that came about. Thirdly, spy flyers. I think I could say what you want, you could disagree. The Dawn School Building was given to the Dawn Progressive Association in nineteen eighty-three. It was a functioning building that held a police substation, a library, a doctor's office, meeting room. Building went down to the point that this board allowed us to have a architect go in and see if that building could be salvaged. It could not be salvaged. We paid this board, the county, you, the taxpayers, paid to have that building looked at. I met with the Dawn Progressive Association on numerous occasions. We used to vote there, this board paid your tax dollars to fix the roof of the building so we could continue to vote there until it was labeled as uninhabited. We met with the Dawn Progressive Association, Mr. Cully had staff, we even had drawing, I took to Dawn Progressive Association. I said, let's put this on a five-year plan to redo a building here for our seat. The community said. There were numerous meetings, where people give her a lie, and said that there were no meetings that the company, or I, tore down. That's a bald-faced lie. That didn't happen. This board saw the plan. It's a phase one, to take down the building, because it had been condemned. The only way we could take the building down is for the Dawn Progressive Association, who owned the building, give it back to the county, because we couldn't spend county money on demolishing the building. That was told me by Mr. Cully, and our attorney. The Dawn Progressive Association gave the building back to the county, we took it down with anticipation of putting up a pavilion, playground, and finally, phase three, because a new building. There were numerous meetings, they. The second lie that was told last week was from members of my district who said that we didn't take any readings regarding the noise at the state fair. Mr. Whiteman and I were day and night, going to sound checks, going to different events. Matter of fact, some of the board members have gone to the events, and we were there checking for sound, twenty-five or thirty, to be exact. But to come up here and lie and say, nothing was done, I have sit in some of your living rooms, and we've done sound check. You don't lie, just say you disagree, still concerned about the noise level. I can accept that. But as I said before, the state fair isn't going, state fair does a lot of good for the county. And finally, Facebook, I don't have Facebook, but I've heard all the madness. And I'm sorry that people get on their, to me, towards, talk about me all you want. I expect, I'm not going to agree with everything you agree with, I welcome your freedom of speech. But those who are saying that if you lay down a dollar, you get two weeks, I see some of us itching. I see it. My phone number is on the county website, like you get on Facebook, you can get on phone, call, send an email. I don't tolerate foolishness, say I'm whatever, I don't tolerate. Say what you want, do what you will. I appreciate my name. My name means a lot to me in Caroline County. I would not have anyone go out and destroy my name over lies. Those are my comments. I have a couple to start, but I've got a few more now. Those of you who follow the board on a record basis will know that our board meetings are conducted under what's called Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules of Order, standard practice for running meetings, and our board bylaws follow them. Under Robert's Rules of Order, there is something called a motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider must be made by the prevailing side after, bring something up that has passed. What we did, and Mr. Sealy and I debated back and forth of me changing my vote, so I would be on the prevailing side and could bring it back, and he threatened to switch his vote, so it would still be three to three. But that's how things got, got to come back under the motion to reconsider. The public had already had, had an opportunity to comment during the public hearing, so it wasn't a case where we cut the public out. We were just reconsidering the decision that the board had made. And I think that's important for people to know, we're not trying to sneak anything by. All this pearl-clutching about, I didn't know it was coming, was quite obvious when I was trying to switch my vote that it would come back again. So we're leaving that at that. I got an email, and my email is on the county website, so I get quite a few unsolicited emails, but I got an email from the University of Mary Washington about a data center discussion that they were going to have from seven to eight PM this Thursday, October thirteenth, at the Jepson Science Center, wherever that is at Mary Washington. I posted that on Facebook, because there was a lot of discussion about us not getting all the information we had out. That was a random email, had nothing to do with the county, I posted that, so any citizen who wanted to see something about data centers would have that opportunity. Needless to say, some of the comments weren't, um, nice, I'll just leave it at that. The county is going to do a data center project, county staff has worked to do that on October thirtieth, it was originally scheduled for the visitor's center, because it was close to where one of the projects was. That's now, I understand, going to be moved to here, which can accommodate more people, so we will be happy to do that. Mr. Cully is going, going to discuss that as soon as I finish my comments briefly, just to make sure folks know what's going on. And last but not least, I do want to also offer my condolences to Mr. Spencer.
And last but not least, I do want to, uh, also offer my condolences to Mr. Spencer Allen's family. Um, I considered Mr. Allen a friend. He and I worked together a long, long time ago, um, on what was called the Solid Waste Task Force. For those of you who've been in the county for a long time, you'll know that we used to have those green boxes on the side of the road. The county decided to put together a task force to figure out how to get rid of those and come up with a much nicer looking convenience sites. Mr. Allen, um, we've often laughed about it together and I, I actually saw him cutting his grass, I thought it was last week, it might have been the week before. But Mr. Allen made the motion that made me the chairman of that citizen committee. And I always say that thanks, when I, whenever I saw him, I always said, thanks Spencer, you got me involved. And he always laughed and said, you deserved it. So I do appreciate it and will always cherish his memory and those things. So that is going to take the end of the board comments.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'd like to talk.
Mr. Seeley, you're out of order, we'll, we'll come back at another time, I'm going to.
Now, I'm talking about the, the actual meeting for, for the data center site because that was also.
About that.
When are we going, when?
Mr. Cully, you going to talk about it right now?
Because the state, the county fair has offered their facility that's heating and air-conditioned.
Mr. Cully is going to talk about that, right? It's, the staff has put it together, the board of supervisors had nothing.
Well, that's, no, 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 the board of supervisors had no input to this, which is wrong.
Mr. Cully, go right ahead. Mr. Seeley, we're going to, we're going to be civil today.
I'm being civil, I'm saying we had no input.
Go ahead, Mr. Cully.
Um, staff's been working on the, the data center town hall since it was brought up at a board meeting to try to put one off. Um, so we have the date of October thirtieth, and yes, we originally were going to do it in the visitor center, but, um, we've changed that to this room because it holds more people. It is, uh, October thirtieth, six thirty to eight thirty. Um, we have, uh, six items on the agenda. Number one would be what is the planned innovation and research technology area? Um, number two, an overview of data center developments. Number three, data centers in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We'll have somebody from, uh, B D E P, uh, to speak. And we, uh, number four, uh, data centers and power supply, we have somebody from, uh, Dominion Energy and, uh, Rappahannock Electric will speak on electric. Number five is, uh, county water supply, Mr. Shee will discuss that. And number six, potential economic development impacts. And we're working on somebody for that. We did have a couple of other people we had invited, one was D E Q and, and then another county, uh, but they were not able to send anybody, um, on, it was still plenty short notice, trying to pull that off in just a couple of weeks.
I think there are two people from the Sierra Club that are doing the Mary, Mary Washington one. Maybe we could get one of those, just to see if we can. I've got their names, I don't, I don't, I don't have their numbers, but if somebody has that contact, we can use that. Really, the, the, the purpose, I think, is Mr. Seeley in, in his opening comments that he worked with it all before. Town hall should be citing, why cite, why not cite, things of that nature, just to make sure. Now, if you'd like to ask a question, Mr. Seeley.
I would, who are the first two speakers?
Leon's going to cover the perk from planning and Kevin Hughes from Stack Infrastructure is going to cover data center development. They do not have any proposed data centers in the county.
Do you, are you aware that somebody's flying over Jericho Road just previous to this meeting looking for data center sites from the county?
I have no way of knowing that.
Do we, so who would know who from the county and who sent who out there to fly a data center tonight on Jericho Road? Chief Loftus here, because the drones are in his capacity.
Gary's doing that, that's to, to get elevations, um, from the river based on, uh, Mr. Black's comment to whether you can see a data center and how many feet, that, that staff, that's not for a company.
Are you flying drones, chief?
Yes, sir, at the request of Mr. Wilson.
Okay, thank, thank you, chief. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Explain why the drones are flying over the data center, or not over the data center, over the property that's being proposed as a data center.
The drones are flying over so that they can take pictures from the.
Can you move the mic some?
Area.
Okay, ma'am, that's the only time you get to yell from the outside. I'm going to try to make them speak up so we can all hear. Mr. Wilson, in your outside voice, please.
What we don't have is a lot of information on that site based on some of the concerns that have been raised. So we wanted to get some pictures from what the site looked like from the river to determine if a data center could be seen from the river, which was a sensitive issue. So we've asked the, no, emergency services has a drone to take pictures from the river to see what you can see. And, and that was the point of it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cully, again, um, at least from my perspective, and I'm going to ask if any other board member has a perspective, but this is, this is a town hall that county staff is putting together without my input, without anybody else's in, input. But really, the focus would be data center citing. Because we're probably, I, I don't want to read the board ahead, but based on the comments, we think data centers are a good thing, it's just where they go to make it a good thing. So you're going to have someone that's going to focus on citing, right? Or can you?
I'll have to think about the specifics of that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Underwood.
That is the major issue that, that's before us. It's not a data center, it's the location of data center. So that's what we need to be discussing. What makes it a good site? What makes it a bad site? What are some of the pros? What are the cons? That's, we've gone through this and this board agrees, all six of us, that we wanted a data center in the northern part of the county. We, we looked at that, this whole board, for three years. The question that's come up in the last two months is about, is the Jericho Road a site for a data center? And if in fact, it's amenable to the, the land? That's the issue. Not, not the, the, the use of a data center, what it does. There's lies saying that data center produce radiation. Well, I got news for you, you got a small data center in your pockets called a telephone or tablet, because it does the same thing. But is that the right place for a data center? That's the question.
So is that what you want to have a town hall on just Jericho Road perk?
No, 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 data centers in general, but data centers in general.
Only got two applications, Madam E.
But, but.
Jericho Road.
But the point, the point of this town hall is to have discussion, pros, cons, of what a data center would mean. And that's, and from, from experts, where, why, I think the Sierra Club. Mr. Forehand, is there anything in particular you'd like to put in the?
Nope, just the, the pros and cons to make sure everybody's aware of each. That's, that was my intent on suggesting it in the first place.
Mr. Black?
I guess two things that I've got, I, I kind of was thinking that we were focusing on the Jericho Road project, because that's the one that has all the controversy, not necessarily the one up north. Um, and then the second thing is, um, I don't know when the project that we have in the northern part of the county is coming for a vote. But, um, I, I thought that was kind of coming to a vote for us pretty quickly, um, the, the one that we're splitting with Spotsylvania. And if, if that is the case, I would want to make sure that we don't have a vote on any, if it's, if the, if the project is about data centers in general, and then we have to vote on a data center before we have the town hall meeting, that's not going to look good. Um, I, I, I think that we should focus on, if we're going to focus on, we, if we're going to focus on data centers in general, there should be no vote at all whatsoever before, um, that October thirtieth. And B, if we're voting on just, if we're concentrating on just Jericho Road, then, then we could have it, the vote could be.
Yeah, I think.
Because the, the reality behind it is if you go vote on data centers and, and, I, I mean, I haven't seen a lot that I'm opposed to on the, on the, uh, the one in the northern part of the county. Uh, but if you just have one in general about, um, data centers and we've already voted on it, it doesn't, it doesn't look good.
No, the focus, again, the focus is data center citing, um, pros and cons, it, what kind of issues would come up in that sense? I, I think.
So we would have no decision on any data center before?
We would. We have a, we have a project that is, um, behind, as we've talked about before in somebody's board comments, when we took things off of the agenda, that was the per, first reading. And that has put us behind in this project.
Right, so then shouldn't, shouldn't it just concentrate on Jericho Road then?
It should concentrate on citing, it could concentrate on Jericho Road, but more citing. A, to give general information to the public of what data centers are. Then B, to, to, to focus on citing, is it a good site, is it a bad site? We've all agreed, all six of us as the representatives for the entire county, that the one we're doing with Spotsylvania is a good site. Chairman, I'm trying to end this.
Right, I am, but let me add on coming. When we talk to Mr. Wilson about data centers, there are more sites in the county other than the two that we've looked at. One we agree is, it's a good site. The other site we agree that's, but there are going to be additional questions and people looking at, so they need to know about the citing more so.
We can't talk specifics, we have N D As with people.
Right, I know, that's why.
Sites that can be talked about other than Jericho Road and Madam E.
Right, and, and I, and I'm trying to stay away from the N D A, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying not to get involved in. But we know that sooner or later, something's going to come. Even though people think we can just talk about anything, which we can't. But we know that, that they're going to come. And that's why I think the citing question is the question.
Right.
And if we can get around having to delay the, the northern project, I think we can do that and then come back and discuss the Jericho Road, um, site. And that would be the only site that we could discuss.
That's my comment, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think that's where we are. Um, so if you can focus on that, Mr. Cully, because as the board is aware, we're going to have a joint meeting with the planning commission on October twenty-fourth to look at a rezoning for the one we're sharing with Spotsylvania. So we will have a vote in order to not lose that project on the twenty-fourth of October. On the thirtieth, when you have the town hall, you can talk about general data centers and specific citing questions and issues, okay? Thank you, sir. We're going to move on, um. I'm going to take a deep breath. Benjamin, can somebody raise Benjamin up so we could see something happy? Okay. That is Benjamin. Benjamin is on my website without, uh, um, you know, permission from his mother, but he, he didn't smile while I was smiling, but we're going to see if we can get him up here and smile again. Our next order of business is recognition of the treasurer, Beth Curran, upon her retirement. Oh, I'm sorry, are there any amendments to the agenda? No amendments to the agenda, the agenda will, will, uh, stand as stated. Mr. Underwood wants to make a motion to approve it as stated, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Curran, if you would come for. ..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................